Good morning, and welcome to the City Council Study Session for September 25th, 2014. Again, to remind those who might not be familiar with me, I'm Mayor Giles. I'm happy to be here with my colleagues. We will excuse Councilmember Fenter, who is out of town this week. Item 1A on our agenda is to hear a presentation and discuss and provide direction on the purchase of insurance for the 2014-2015 year. Ms. Spinner and Ms. Hawkins will lead this discussion.
Morning, Mayor and Council. I have Mark Stedman, the Deputy for the Litigation Unit. He and I manage the Public and Property Liability Trust Fund. And Nitra Hawkins is here. She manages the Workers' Compensation Trust Fund. We also have our broker, Bill Shoals from Willis of Arizona, and our Risk Manager, Lisa Lortz, in the audience if you have any questions. Mayor and Council, we're here to, again, buy insurance. We do this every year, and we bring this to the council so before we go out to bids. So if the council wants to give us direction on what type of deductibles or policy limits we should be looking for, we can have that information in advance so that by the time we go out, we come back, we can purchase the insurance, and there's no lapse in our insurance. So I'm going to start off with insurance that we purchase from the Property and Public Liability Trust Fund, from these, this trust fund. It's funded by the General Fund, but the disbursements include not only the insurance premiums, it also includes payments of any claims and lawsuits that we make by the City of Mesa, as well as the attorney's fees and the litigation costs in defending those claims and lawsuits. The insurance we purchase is the excess liability insurance, the property insurance, aviation, and cyber risk insurance. And you can see, I've given you five years of history on the total cost for insurance for the City of Mesa. Last year, we spent just over $1.1 million for these insurance premiums. So first up...
Yes?
Is it an industry trend, or is it a function of claims that are, that's driving the upward trend in our costs on premiums?
Really both, Councilmember Richens. We have, obviously, the industry trends, and they go up and down. We saw in 2001, before the 9/11, our insurance rates were much lower. They went significantly higher in the early 2000s. They then came back down, and they could blip because of an incident like Katrina. We could have property rates increase. But you can see, they've been relatively stable. We had a significant increase last year. One of the main reasons for that was, in November 2012, the liability insurance that we purchased, the excess liability insurance, we had an extremely low rate for the insurance at that time. We had a broker, Star Insurance, that was coming into the industry, and were, it was like their first time trying to sell public liability insurance, and they came in at a very, very competitive rate, significantly lower than the other providers. And they are no longer offering public liability insurance. So last year, our insurance went up fairly significantly, and we believe it was mainly because of that. All right? Okay, so the excess liability insurance is the first type of insurance we are seeking direction on. This covers insurance above our self-insured retention, which is, basically operates the same as our deductible. The City of Mesa has, for a number of years, had a $3 million SIR, which means for every claim or every occurrence, the City of Mesa is responsible for the first $3 million of payment for those claims. The excess insurance pays any amount above $3 million. We have excess liability insurance up to $40 million right now. And so any loss, if there happened to be one, in excess of $40 million, the City of Mesa would be responsible for that as well. We've never come anywhere close to that, so we're pretty comfortable there. What we are recommending when we go out now is that we keep the $3 million SIR, and that we ask for policy limits at $40 million, and we ask for $50 million, too, just to see what the additional cost would be. Some of the other municipalities in the state of Arizona have $50 million or more in excess liability insurance. So we thought we'd ask for that bid, and then bring that back to council, and council can decide what's in the best interest of Mesa. Any questions or concerns about the excess liability insurance? No? Okay, next, we purchase property insurance, and this insurance protects the City of Mesa assets. We have about a billion dollars in property assets in the City of Mesa that we insure through this insurance. We have a $50,000 deductible now, and a policy limit of $300 million per occurrence. And we are recommending that with this, when we go out with this insurance, that we request bids on both a $50,000 and a $100,000 deductible, as well as the $3 million policy limit. Again, just to give council, how much savings would there be if we increased our deductible?
Is that deductible per occurrence, the 50 to 100?
Yes.
How would that change what we have to retain from a general fund standpoint for insurance? I mean, it's 50 now, I mean, we'd be doubling it if we go that route.
Right. I don't believe it would change it, because I think in the 12 years that I've been the city attorney, we've had one, maybe two, claims that have exceeded $50,000, where we've actually gone and requested insurance on our, on our property. Maybe marketing numbers. I remember there was a fire truck once, and there may have been one other claim.
We had the Falcon Fire claim.
Oh, there we go.
Falcon Field Fire, and so that, that one went beyond our deductible. So that would one where the 50 versus 100 would make a difference.
And that was a more significant one. But, so our risk there is an additional $50,000 cost to the city per occurrence, but we'll see what our cost savings would be.
So that only, that, do we average an incident a year? Less than an incident a year?
Yes. Yes, less than a property damage claim a year. That would exceed our deductible that the insurance would kick in, that's correct.
So how would something like the flood event that just occurred factor into this situation? Is it related, or no?
Potentially, yes. First, most of the exposure in a case like that would be liability coverage, not property coverage. The property coverage would apply to Mesa, Mesa's own assets. So with regard to the liability coverage, it's the $3 million per occurrence, so that's what we would be looking at. So the city would be facing $3 million, and then anything above that arising out of that incident would be covered by our excess liability insurance. With regard to the property insurance, then if there were City of Mesa assets, like if council chambers were flooded, city would be responsible for the first 50, and beyond that, our property insurance comes in.
You wouldn't rebuild this building, though, right? Oh, God.
Mayor, one more if I might. How does this factor into our enterprise assets? So utility infrastructure, is that insured in a different, different risk pool, or is it factored in this risk pool?
It is in this risk pool.
Because that could be, I mean, if we had some infrastructure damage, then that could get serious pretty quick.
Definitely. And as Debbie was saying, we have, so on this, it's a $300 million occurrence limit. So...
It would be limited to 50 million.
All right. Mr. Schultz, our broker is reminding me that, that we would have, actually, let's get that, I want to make sure I'm accurate on this. Did you say we would be limited to 50 million in a flood zone?
$50 million flood coverage. We have 300 million for, but $50 million for specifically the flood exposure.
Flood's a whole different...
Correct.
What about damage from, like, acts of terrorism on, on public infrastructure? Is this covered under that?
We do have TRIA coverage. And the TRIA coverage is a federally offered program that is up for renewal this upcoming year. But given the acts in Syria and whatnot, it's expected by the insurance industry that TRIA coverage will be extended for another duration.
Is that within this pool, the property pool, or is that a different coverage?
There is TRIA offered on all lines of coverage. The city has the option of purchasing TRIA. TRIA is not a mandatory coverage. The original thought behind TRIA was that if there was another 9/11, insurance companies could not financially withstand the consequences. We'd have toppling of insurance companies, which would hurt American capitalism and DNA because insurance wouldn't be available. So Congress is really the only insurance company large enough to withstand the billions of dollars that a 9/11 hit would take financially.
Okay, but if we just had an act of vandalism or something on our utility infrastructure, which could exceed quickly this...
That would not be a problem, sir.
And that would be covered under this property?
TRIA is specifically defined as an act of terrorism against the United States, an act of war declared by Congress. So if...
Okay, okay.
Vandalism and other acts would be covered by, by the standard insurance policy. It's very specifically for acts of war.
Quick question. Good to see you, by the way.
Nice to see you, Mayor.
Given that this is pretty much, on the property damage level, this is pretty much catastrophic coverage, where we have a claim once every year or two, have we ever analyzed the merits of reducing the deductible down to the point where, because we operate, obviously, a large fleet of vehicles, I'm sure there's, we're constantly having small claims. Have we explored the financial pros and cons of reducing the deductible down to the point where we're actually getting some insurance coverage for those garden variety claims that I'm sure are occurring?
Mayor, I don't believe we have in the last several years. We could reduce that, we could at least seek a bid if you would like to. I don't know, Bill, if you have any, any thoughts on what the cost would be for that, but we could certainly seek their bids.
The property coverage currently is $440,289 with a $50,000 deductible. We could take a look at a lower deductible, but it would increase the cost of the insurance.
Sure.
Generally speaking, for large public entities with loss funds, we try to get you out of the working layer, because once we get into the working layer where you actually do receive coverage, then the costs go up, usually greater than the savings. But we should take a look at that, Mayor.
I'd be curious, but on the other hand, I assume we have our own body shop, we do all of the routine repairs, and so it's not like we're going out paying market rate for those repairs anyway. So I can see where possibly it might not pencil out.
Yeah, we, Mayor, Council, we, there are so many different levels of our fleet, and some of that we do take out to local vendors, and if we can do some of it in-house. But we can look at those costs and see what we manage, so.
So Mayor, we'll talk to the broker, and maybe we'll also go out with a bid for a lower deductible, whether it's $10,000, $15,000, or $20,000. We'll, we'll discuss that if, if that's okay with council.
Thank you, I'd be curious. Yes?
Just on a different point, on the $300 million policy limit per occurrence, why are we covered to 300 million? Do we have an asset worth $300 million that we want to cover that, put at that level? Or what is the cascading event that we're imagining that would potentially reach $300 million in loss?
It could be, it could be a, a large flood, it could be a gas explosion. Obviously, it would be a catastrophic event to reach $300 million.
You know, wastewater treatment plant would get, you know, or multiple parts of a plant like that, I don't know if we'd get quite the 300 million, but we could get, you could imagine there are some pieces of our infrastructure could get at least half that much.
That's roughly a third of our total assets of $1 billion. That's a party's...
So that's per occurrence, or is that...
So essentially, we would have to, it would have to be such a catastrophic event that we lose a third of our, right?
Right.
I guess the question I would have is, do we need to cover a third of our assets for any single loss?
We could certainly look at that. Our calculation, we call it PML, probable maximum loss, to ensure that all the city's assets up to $1 billion would probably be cost prohibitive. So, and it is somewhat arbitrarily, but there is a formula for probable maximum loss, and we came up with 300 million, but certainly, Councilmember Summers, we could take...
I think, I think when we, we sit down to make our decision about what, the level of insurance we actually want to pursue, and we make that decision here in a couple of weeks or months, if we could have that number, how we got to that $300 million based on that formula.
Or maybe have an alternative bid.
We could, we could go out at, what would you like, 200 million, just to see what the bid is? If we have a maximum, a policy limit...
Well, I don't want to be arbitrary about it. If there's a, if there's a formula, recognized formula that you plug in, I think, and if that ranges, then maybe we ought to look at that. But I, I'm just, I mean, covering a third of our assets, which are all in...
Spread out.
Spread out in a city of 100 and some odd square miles, the fact I should know, it just, it seems an unlikely loss occurrence to me, and I really wonder if we're overinsured for, for a policy limit per occurrence. I mean, we just had a flood, but it was in a neighborhood, it's not...
Or even if you can imagine the worst-case scenario of a single largest, most expensive asset, I don't think we'd get above 150 million.
The city, the city isn't subject to, to citywide floods, we're not subject to earthquakes, hurricanes just make it rain a lot, wildfires aren't going to sweep through the, through the community like they do in other places. So the, the, those types of large-scale catastrophic events that could cause a significant loss in our infrastructure, I just don't see happening here. And I, and I wonder, now that I look at this number, whether or not, maybe, maybe backing it down to 200 million, if, if, if it makes sense in a formula, isn't a, wouldn't save us money and still provide us more than adequate coverage.
So if I understand you, what you'd like us to do is we'll have Bill go back and make sure that 300 million is consistent with the industry standard, and if so, we remain at 300 million. If that's not consistent, then we would go with whatever.
Yeah, just like, just like going through a home policy, reviewing the basics every once in a while isn't a bad idea, and I think, looking at this number, it's probably time that we look at it and decide whether or not we're overinsured, if we're doing the right thing.
And some of that, Councilmember Summers, we'll go back to your appetite for risk. What is the city's appetite?
I'm starving right now, so. No, it's just, you know, we're, overall, we are a very safe city. I mean, even outside, entities have recognized, Mesa, I remember about a year ago, Mesa and Milwaukee tied for the safest cities in, in America. Do events happen? Yes. Do we need to be insured? Yes. But to what level makes the most sense?
All right, we will move on to airport and aircraft insurance. This is for Falcon Field. Gateway Airport has its own, it's a separate entity, and it purchases its own separate insurance. But we provide insurance for Falcon Field. For the airport liability insurance, so we purchased two different types of insurance, one airport liability, and this is to protect the City of Mesa against claims of negligence that occur at the airport due to airport operations. Could be just like a slip and fall in the terminal. And, excuse me, for airport liability, we have always gone with, we get a pretty good policy there. We have zero deductible, or SIR. So the insurance picks up from dollar one, and we have $100 million policy limit there at Falcon Field. So we were recommending we just go forward with that same policy limit. The cost is relatively low. For airport liability, it has cost us $15,000 last year. So for the level of coverage and the cost, we think that that has been pretty beneficial to the city. The aircraft hull and liability insurance is a separate policy, and that protects the City of Mesa for its aircraft assets there at the airport, and if there happens to be negligence associated with operating the City of Mesa aircraft at the airport. Again, we've had some pretty successful insurance quotes there. We have a zero SIR, so again, we're covered from dollar one, and $100 million policy limit, and that policy costs just over $72,000 a year. So again, we're recommending to stay at those variables.
Mr. Luna.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Spinner, are you talking about the, the police helicopters?
Yes.
Okay. That's the only assets that we own in terms of aircrafts?
Yes.
There's a fixed, fixed wing plane also.
So, any questions or concerns about the airport or aircraft insurance? Okay, the last type that we purchase from the PPL Trust Fund is the cyber risk insurance, and we purchased this for the first time last year. And this protects the City of Mesa against possible disclosures of confidential information, like credit card information or dates of birth. And other cities are now purchasing it as well, as you can see, Phoenix, Tempe, Gilbert and Flagstaff. I, I expect that this is going to become more common. What it protects against, or the services it provides, is if there is, somebody hacks into the City of Mesa system and information is disclosed, it will first pay for the cost of notifying all of the individuals that are now in jeopardy, and second, it will provide credit monitoring for, I believe it's a year, for those individuals. And we are recommending that we stay at a policy limit of five, well, I'm sorry, we're recommending that, that we get quotes for both 5 billion and 10 million. Right now, we have 5 million. We thought we would just go out into the market and see how much additional funds it would cost to increase that to 10 million, because we've seen some pretty massive disclosures in the past year.
Mr. Kavanaugh, and then Mr. Summers.
Yeah, and I guess I would look at the example of the Miracopa Community College District as the current, the big disaster in terms of public entities. And, and so that's, that's what I think, that's where I think we need to be looking at that example, to be able to provide coverage for us, because, again, of all the data that we have, and all the customers that we have, I think it's important to have this coverage.
Councilmember Kavanaugh, their, their costs, I believe, have exceeded 10 million already. That's why we are asking for, to take a look at some additional, additional 5 million in coverage.
Councilmember Kavanaugh, they did not purchase insurance.
Oops.
Yeah, oops.
Mr. Summers.
You're an excellent salesman. How is, the credit card companies are making some changes to their cards, starting, I believe, in August of next year, they have to, they're including a chip to help cut down on a number of, the ability to steal credit card numbers so that they're actually usable. How is that, that potential technology change going to impact liability and risk?
I was worried about technology change, but that, that's interesting.
Okay, could we look at that, then?
Yeah.
Let's see if, if, if that's going to make any change at all, given the nature of how we do business, which is mostly electronic via...
Yeah, I would assume that if, if it comes into effect next year, it will, you know, there'll be a period of time where the insurance companies are waiting to see, there'll be a lag time, is it working? And if it is working, then presumably, the insurance rates for this type of insurance would come down. But I don't know that there'll be a immediate impact on the insurance.
So we would expect a lag of some kind, but it's something just to look at in the future and see what's coming down, if that's going to affect us. Thanks.
Debbie, this coverage is interesting. What, the risk that we're insuring against is, is our costs in responding to a breach in security. It doesn't protect our customers who, who may experience losses of their own related to this.
That is correct.
Are we protected against claims, negligence claims, from our customers, saying you fell below the standard of care in protecting our information? Or would that come under a different type of policy?
Yeah, that, that is correct. This policy does cover negligence of the City of Mesa, but in the other large claims, TJ Maxx, Chase, the policy, the administrative costs of checking credit records and notifying millions of people is a significant cost.
Okay.
So the administrative part of the claim process is a big component of the insurance coverage you're purchasing.
All right, thank you.
Okay, if, no other questions, I will turn it over to Nitra, who will talk about the Workers' Compensation Trust Fund.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for your time. So for the Workers' Compensation Trust Fund, it is also funded through the General Fund, and it does cover all costs associated with an injury that an employee may incur while they're working for the City of Mesa. It also covers the cost of our special and administrative taxes, as well as our insurance premiums. And so that will be the first thing that I will discuss, is our excess workers' compensation premium that we are required to have as an entity here. Right now, our SIR is at $1 million. So essentially, just like property and liability, we, as the city, is, we are responsible for that first $1 million per occurrence. After that $1 million, we will then seek reimbursement for that policy year of when that date of injury or illness occurred. And so right now, based on our loss experience, we are still strongly recommending that we do stay at the $1 million SIR. We are also working with our broker, and I do apologize, they were unable to attend this morning. We are working with them on obtaining SIRs of 1.5 and above, just to have a good comparison so that we can bring that forward to the council for review at that point in time. So right now, with our current loss exposure, we are still recommending the 1.5 million. If you look over the past seven, five, six years, you'll see the cost of those premiums, and last year, we paid $314,819 for our insurance premium last year. Do you have any questions regarding the excess insurance premium?
Yeah, this is the one that I'm the most concerned about. Not just, I mean, it's a pretty significant upward trend in costs, but I've also seen a, and been hearing about a significant increase in injuries and, within our workforce.
That is correct.
And we are not doing enough about safety, about teaching safety to our employees, about making sure that they practice their, their craft safely, that they go home to their families every day. And if, if we're going to continue to see this upward trend in workman's comp, we need to compensate, we need, we need to change our training practices in a way that reinforces that, that every, every line employee that we have, from the mayor on down, needs to, we need to really rethink the way that we're addressing safety within all of our departments, because it's just unacceptable to have people going home with injuries from work. Unacceptable. And so this, this trend is, is, is the financial reality...
Yes.
...of what's happening in our workforce. It's time to address it on the other side and, and start doing some training to, and it's not, you know, the money, we can figure out the money to pay the premiums, it's, it's the, the financial cost. And if you were to probably go to our, our health insurance pool, we would see it reflected there as well, the injuries, you know, have you treat that from injuries? That's just the financial side, but we need to deal with the human side of this, and, and, you know, somehow get the managers together. And, you know, that's kind of a salvo for Chris, too, to, to really think about how we're treating safety within our workforce. So not only do we get a handle on this increase in trend, but, but we send our employees home safely every day. Thanks.
Mr. Summers.
Yeah, we're running our own health clinic now, so that, those costs could start to rise as a result of this, and I think this, this particular issue may be one that we want to have a study session on, to look at, department by department, what the injuries are, which ones are having the greatest risk, and what type of injuries they're having, and then we can direct a policy towards reducing those injuries and ultimately reducing the cost.
Sure, and the, the information that we're seeing now is a $50,000 increase in the premium, it would be, I think we'd all be interested to see what is the payouts of claims year to year. Does this reflect proportionately an increase in claims, or is it just an industry-wide spike in premiums that doesn't necessarily reflect anything related to our particular situation? I'd be curious to see that.
Okay.
Mr. Kavanaugh.
Okay, go ahead. And let's put it in perspective, though, the premiums we're talking about here are for access coverage.
That's correct.
And the, the driver for access coverage is medical costs. And these are for catastrophically injured workers, typically the paraplegic or the quadriplegic, where you have lifelong care, and so that's really where the, the cost is here, almost all of our, very few claims, we have very few claims that go over a million dollars in terms of payouts, both on the medical and, and benefit side. I mean, hardly any, except, again, if you get the real catastrophic injury, which fortunately, we've been pretty lucky in having that. And the city, historically, I think, has done a really good job in, in managing those claims. I know before, in the four years I was off council, I had to deal with the city, and they're very challenging to deal with on my claims, so. They saved a lot of money on my cases, I think. But the, I think, at least the trend is, in Arizona, over the last 25 years, is decreasing worker comp claims, and that's due to generally safer workplaces. The one thing that, that we do have to be aware of is that safety training programs, kind of like marketing programs, are the first things that get caught when we have downturns in economies, and that's both true in the public sector and private sector. And so I think it's, Councilmembers, it is an important issue for us to understand what is the nature and level and activity for the safety training that we do have within the community, because the, the reason for the decrease... the community, because the, the reason for the decrease in claims in Arizona is really safer workplaces, and communicating that knowledge all the way up and down the line. But I'm not so surprised, really, at the increase in the, in the premium cost here, because this is just for buying your access coverage
That is correct.
for those very few claims that we might have.
Yes, and just to address that, you are correct. We have very few claims that even exceed $1 million. I think we have, like, three as a total, as the City of Mesa. And Councilmember Richens, just to address your concerns, are very, very valid. And as a city, we do have a citywide safety committee, and we are working and partnering with those liaisons to take back. And it is a living process, so it's not going to happen overnight, but it is our goal to make sure that everybody does go home safely. Now, again, there are those events that happen because they are nonpreventable. You're, you're at a stoplight, some other person comes and we're in you. So we are looking at other programs to implement. We recently implemented the Smith Driving System Training that helps drivers to be more aware of when they're out on the street, how can you avoid collisions, because we have seen those. And so our, our goal is to address those, and we are actively working and partnering with those departments to do that. So I just wanted to make sure. And it will be not a problem for me to come back with the data that has been requested to show what the trends are by department, by activity. In fact, I've already been working on that, so that can be shared with the department so I can bring that data back to the council. Not a problem. All right, so with that, the only other thing that, unfortunately, I do apologize, that was not included in the presentation, is as a self-insured entity, we do have to bond. We have to go out and get a self-insurance bond, and that is also paid by the Workers' Compensation Trust Fund. And what that surety bond represents is basically a security deposit to the state of Arizona that we are covered for all of our unpaid outstanding liabilities on all of our open claims. And so last year, or actually for this year, we bonded for $25.8 million plus. And so during our next, or in our next report, I'll be able to provide you with an estimated bond amount at that point in time. So does anyone have any questions regarding the bond or any other regarding the excess work comp premium?
Mr. Kavanaugh.
Yes?
And again, just by way of explanation, the, this type of bond is required by
Yes.
all the entities that self-insure for, for worker comp, because in the event that the City of Mesa defaulter was unable to pay its claims, the Industrial Commission has to step in and process and pay those benefits. And so whether you're a Boeing self-insured or City of Mesa self-insured, state law requires the bond to cover your potential claim costs.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Good presentation. All right, the next item on our agenda is 1B, here, a presentation, discuss and provide direction on the Mesa Fire and Medical Department's Community Care Response Initiative as it relates to a grant award. So this is great news. Congratulations on being successful in the grant. We're excited to hear how you're going to spend all that money.
That won't be hard, Mayor Giles. Let's see here. This thing doesn't get all the light. Can you look that up? Let's see. This card doesn't go.
It's on work.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Mayor Giles, members of the council, thank you so much for having us here today. And as you mentioned, this is a grant that we've been awarded. We were at council over a year ago, asking for funding to apply for this grant. And thank you to the support of City Manager's Office, the mayor and council, we were able to apply for it. Fortunately, we did receive the award, and you will see it on the October 6th agenda as an action item to approve the resolution to accept the award. So we're here to kind of tell you a little bit more about the details and just to review what we've talked about a year ago. And I have to say, this is very, very important for all of us, because I think the grant that we applied for here, we applied for $13.7 million, only received $12.5. We're still very happy with that. But I think we're the largest, that we know of, the largest fire department, and our regional partners with Superstition Medical and Queen Creek that have received this type of award for medical services through the federal government. So we know that all lives will be on the City of Mesa, and we appreciate the support we've been getting so far. City Manager's Office has helped us incredibly, purchasing ITD, the Budget Office, Sharon Skinner from Grants. So we've received a lot of support through the city, because it's really a group project. So we're very thankful for that, because I think this is going to help in the success of getting these programs up and running. So to start with, the, the grant partners that we are working with is Mountain Vista Medical Center, and they are the ones that supply the PAs for our program, the PAs and nurse practitioners. We've had the program running for about two years before we even applied for the grant. So when we wrote for the grant, that was already in there for, that we've been running this program for two years. And please excuse me, I forgot to mention the gentleman that are with me, and I apologize. To my left is Dr. Gary Smith. He is our medical director for the fire department. Dr. Smith has been instrumental, instrumental in really helping us to move forward, these innovative medical programs that are, that haven't been done across the country. A chief, deputy chief Steve Ward. Steve is, is our program manager for the grant from the fire department, so Steve's going to help run all the activities that surround the grant.
Yeah.
It'd be a fun job. And to, and to my right is Tony Lojudice, and Tony is actually our grant administrator. And Tony wrote the grant. So Tony's instrumental in making sure we follow the guidelines of the grant as we move forward. So pardon me for forgetting to introduce him in the very beginning. So our partners with the grant are Mountain Vista Medical Center, CPR Behavioral Health. CPR is the one that, is the company that has provided our behavioral health folks that run the behavioral side of the grant, which we'll go into as we move forward. Superstition Fire and Medical Departments, those, they are also going to have a PA behavioral car in their city as well. And then AT Steel University, we're going to use AT Steel. Their PAs are riding with our program to kind of gather information, working as a PA. We're using their educational facility for training, things like that, and also for education that we're going to do to the communities. We're going to utilize AT Steel for that as well. And then the town of Queen Creek. Queen Creek wants to have more of an observation role, but also, as we move forward in the grants and respond on patient follow-ups and things like that, they are in agreeance to go ahead and work with patients in that area as well. A little bit about the information, and we were notified on July 8th that we were awarded the grant. That was about, almost a year from the date that we applied for the grant. We received $12.5 million. The good thing is, there's no cost matched to this grant. It's a three-year grant, and the first year is $4.5 million that we're going to spend, so it's divided into the second and third year, about $4 million. The grant pays salaries, benefits for the key personnel and related equipment. So all of the PAs, all of our fire personnel that are going to be running on these cars and these units are going to be paid for by the grant. And also, just some equipment that, some associated equipment that, that goes with the program. And then there's no, no further programmatic commitment required beyond, beyond the final reporting. So we're going to do quarterly reports. Right now, we have a project manager that we report to weekly with CMS. We give updates to, we ask questions to. If we have changes or amendments to the grant, we will work through this project manager. And so they'll keep them up on what we're doing. So, but once the grant, we do a final report, and there's no other requirements from the city. And there won't be any outstanding, one of the requirements per council when we applied for the grant is that we don't have outstanding costs after the three years. So we've worked it out that, once this is done, we're going to hire contract employees through attrition, the company officers that are going to be on these units, through attrition, if for some reason we can't sustain this, through attrition, they will go back into, we will not have outstanding costs in personnel in that regard either. So we've worked those out as well. Now, we're going to have Chief Ward go over the program goals that we're going through.
Good morning, thank you. So Chief, Chief Camilli spoke, spoke about the award information, so I just want to expand a little bit this morning on the, the program goals for you, just briefly. So what we, what we're really looking at here, and what was presented in the, in the grant, was to look at more efficient ways and, of doing business, and some innovative ways of doing business. And so, of course, when we talk about that, one of the things we talk about is costs. And as written in the grant, one of the things that we're going to do is what we call pseudo-billing. That's one of the ways we're going to look at cost savings. So the grant has provided us the ability to procure a service to do some, this mock billing. And what our goal is, is to move the billing forward through the process, but we're not actually going to move money. So what we can actually do is see the difference between our, our new innovative ways of doing business versus what the traditional ways of doing business are. So our, our customers are not going to receive any bills, there will be no copays, but we will have the ability to see how that billing would have moved forward, and, and that way we can measure the difference in our, our, our way of doing business traditionally versus the way we're going to be doing business with, with the grant.
So Chief, just, the pool of money that we receive from the federal government is, is covering the cost of those things, and you're going to go through a mock billing process as if you were billing, and that would test the system? Is that basically what this amounts to?
Yeah, that, that's correct. So, of course, you know, one of the big goals here is improve patient, improved healthcare outcomes. So we're going to work with our partners, and we're going to really look at patient outcomes. That traditionally has always been very difficult to do. However, we have very strong partners on the professional side, and we have come up with ways for them to report that to us, and we're required to report that to CMS as far as our patient outcomes. And one thing I want to touch on, this is very data-driven. We're going to be doing some, doing some really robust data reporting to CMS. We have been, over the last two years, doing some pretty good data reporting internally to look at these programs, and we've done a really good job with efficiencies. But we're really going to expand that under this program and do some, some very robust data analysis and reporting to CMS. So overall, we're looking to improve the healthcare system efficiencies. And when we talk about overall system efficiencies, we're also talking about right here, as far as our, what City of Mesa does in our pre-hospital healthcare. We're part of the, the system. We're looking to show system-wide, including what we do here, efficiencies. Which leads me to the next thing, here on the bullet points, it says, test sustainability. I'd like to take that a step further, and what we really want to do is, is prove sustainability over the next three years. And when I talk about proving sustainability, we're looking at fiscal sustainability and operational sustainability right here in the Mesa Fire Medical Department and in the region. That's our goal there. And then, of course, continue improving service delivery. That really is the overall goal. The great thing about this is, is that our, our citizens and our customers are going to be able to experience these improved service models that we've been able to do on a small scale, but now we're going to really do them on a big scale, and we're going to be able to provide these services to many more of our citizens here in Mesa. And we believe that's, it's going to be a great thing.
Great, I have a quick question. I assume part of the reason this was such a well-received application for a grant is because this is a really interesting idea, where we say, look, we're going to prove to you, or we're going to test this, the financial sustainability of this program by actually doing a mock billing program, so that the end of this, we can show whether this is a good idea or not. So I assume it would be a violation of the, the grant criteria if we were to actually bill anyone's health insurance, correct? Even though they'll, but we're going to ask them the question, do you have health insurance? Yes, can I get that number? Here's how, we do everything except push send to the insurance company. And the reason that we need to explain to the citizens that we're not actually trying to recover any of that money is because that would violate the terms of our grant, I assume.
Mayor, that is correct. We are not looking to recover any money. What we are trying to do is just show the, the movement of how that would look so we can compare those costs. And we will be working with the payers
Yeah.
to, to do that without actually moving it away. So there will be no copays, there will be no bills sent to customers or anything like that.
And Mayor, to add to that, we are going through the RFP process for the billing service, because that is included in the grant, to cover that cost of a billing service. So when we do finish the RFP process or as we're going through it, we'll advise them that this is how the approach is with this billing service that we're going to obtain.
And then obviously, at the end of the program, we'll be able to see, the council will be able to see from a financial standpoint, if we just turn the key on the system and start sending out bills, when the federal money runs out, it will either break even or not, right? Okay.
That's correct. Any other questions? Okay, next, we'll have Dr. Gary Smith go over the programs that we're doing with the grant.
Yeah, thank you for allowing us to be here. This is fantastic. As we have taken a look at this community care initiative, it's gone back a couple of years, and so we've actually have a proof of concept. The proof of concept has been over the past two, and we have demonstrated the effectiveness of this model within the City of Mesa, and it's very positive to see. It's morphed a little bit since its early inception, and it will continue to change over time. What we're looking at currently is these community care units that are going to be operating every day of the week. And so holidays, weekends, nights, it doesn't matter, we'll have units that'll be in service. They'll be staffed with a captain paramedic that is a suppression officer, and we'll also have an advanced practice provider. That advanced practice provider will either be a nurse practitioner or physician assistant. And they'll be the ones that are under contract through Mountain Vista Medical Center. And they'll be the ones providing the majority of that service. Most of this will be on low acuity patients. On occasion, it may be on an emergent patient, because if there are the units that are very occupied and busy throughout the city at, during a busy time, these individuals may have to respond with lights and siren, but that would be the very, very minority of the situation. The other that we see is the community care special units, that will be manned with behavioral health specialists, along with a suppression captain, paramedic, so that we can help evaluate those patients as well. We've identified what those peak times have been over the last approximately year and a half that we've had mental health services being provided. We are actually providing that service at the point of call, and then managing the person whether they're or being taken to a more appropriate facility outside of an emergency department where it's very cost prohibitive to continue with the healthcare system currently. And so we take those patients specifically to behavioral health facilities, and they receive them directly and primarily. Go ahead.
Well, what you're bringing up now is that we would be able, we'd be transporting these patients to alternate facilities, not to, to hospitals. So that begs the question, because the State of Arizona Department of Health Services regulates transportation, where are we in that process with the State of Arizona about taking patients to alternate facilities?
Thank you. The, a couple of items with respect to that. One is, is the police department is, has the ability to transport a patient wherever patients needed to be taken.
The state doesn't regulate that.
That is correct. Nor do they regulate the city as a whole in taking a person to an alternative destination. For example, we can do that with a city-provided vehicle without billing for that service. Now, the only time where it is that Department Health Services is going to get engaged with that is if we send a bill for that transportation. When we are not sending a bill for that, we are not jeopardizing any of the statutes at the level of Department of Health Services. So we are, we're in a very safe zone.
Yeah, though I would say that, watching this, the Department of Health Services folks are probably squirming a little bit on that one.
We'll, we'll continue to watch.
Their, yeah, their interpretation, oh, I have no problem making anybody squirm, don't get me wrong. I just, I'm a little concerned, because their interpretations sometimes differ than the rest of us.
Councilmember Summers and members of the council, we have met with DHS, and we gave them the full presentation. They're very aware of what we're doing. So they haven't mentioned anything to this point, but they're aware that we're doing this program.
They're, they're doing one of those, we're keeping an eye on you type of thing.
That could be.
All right. I, I think at some point, a CON for this kind of thing would cover everything. It also allows us to bill for that service in the future, once this, this program is done, and we look, because you mentioned in the previous slide or two, that this is, we were looking at the sustainability, financial sustainability, test sustainability of the program. And so having that CON for transportation to alternate facilities, I think, is, is an important aspect of this program.
Thank you. I think this is a great program. I just want to understand operationally how this is going to happen. So we have a trained community care specialist that will be in the vehicle, and then they, they decide to pick up somebody, then make the assessment or ascertain whether this person is exhibiting any mental health issues, then call the nurse at a facility and say, we have this patient that's exhibiting some signs of mental health issues. And then, then, then you would actually transport that person to that, to that facility. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay.
The next item is looking at nurse triage in the communication center. And the communication center, when a person calls 911, there's a process that takes place with a call taker. That call taker will go through various questioning, as they normally would with any 911 caller. And once it's determined that it's going to be a lower acuity call, that'll transition that, away from the 911 operator, directly over to a nurse who has been trained in triage. For example, if you were to call your physician's office after hours, you, more than likely, you would receive a nurse triage that would be asking you certain questions prior to even receiving any kind of advice or what you need to accomplish. And so we'll, we'll be doing the same thing, allowing them to have the most appropriate service being dispatched to that particular caller, so that we can provide the greatest service that is necessary. That nurse triage individual would have access to a four-person ALS company, all the way down to something of a paramedic-level response that is way down to something of a paramedic-level response that is of a low-acuity nature, and having the advanced practice providers, mental health specialists that would be going out there. And sometimes we'll, you may take a look at down the road, we're not there yet, whether or not we even need to have a response. Because a person, all they may need to do is take a couple of Tylenol and call their physician's office in the morning, and that's really what needed to be done. We send out four-person companies today on many of those kinds of calls. Many times they're after hours and many times after 10:00 PM. And so we want to try to minimize that type of traffic when necessary. The next item that you'll see is follow-up care. That's patients that have been hospitalized and are discharged and to back home, so they don't go to a skilled nursing facility, but they go directly home, or from a skilled nursing facility to home, that we can actually go out and evaluate those patients. It's gap coverage. We're not looking to get into the home healthcare business. Until home healthcare can actually get out there to start caring for those patients long-term, we will actually supply some services that would be there. And this, to be honest with you, is outside the grant. Okay? You need to understand that piece. And so it is a billable service. It's something that can be compensated, whether it's based on a capitated rate, or whether it's on a fee-for-service type, or whether we look at it in another mechanism to have coverage, cost coverage, or, or to allow us to continue those services. We provide a very robust immunization program throughout the City of Mesa. It's a wonderful service that's accessed through, we have a partnership that we have with Mesa Public Schools, as well as many other entities that are out there, and we are very aggressive towards helping immunize the public. Hurt immunity is what it's all about. The more people that are immunized, the fewer incidents that we'll have of infectious diseases. And so it's important that we continue to immunize those individuals. We'll have a mobile service-based home inspections, and so in other words, when we go out to a person's home, if it is on a follow-up care or at any other time that we are requested, we can actually do a home safety inspection, looking for fall risks, taking a look for fire issues that may be within the home, and try to minimize the number of incidents that we would be responding on based upon individuals with, specifically with ground level falls, which is a big, a big number of our calls. And then we also are moving towards centralized medical direction. To describe that for a moment, what currently occurs is when a paramedic has a question that's on a scene caring for a patient, they call an emergency department. When they call that emergency department, oftentimes, that physician that they would like to speak with is engaged in a procedure or an evaluation of a patient, and there's a nurse intermediary that takes that call, relays information to a physician, and then back to the paramedic. We believe that's very inefficient, and it doesn't provide the appropriate information from the physician back to the paramedic and to all services. Hence, we'll run this through the Communication Center. There'll be physicians who are in a non-clinical role that will be taking that call 24/7 for all of the programs that will be involved in, from ALS care all the way to the low-acuity and the mental health patients, so they can provide good advice to those caregivers that we have on scene. Any questions?
Yes, thank you, doctor. This is obviously, the more I learn, the more impressed I am with, with what you're doing. Of these bullet points, is the only thing that's beyond the scope of the grant, of the follow-up care?
That's correct.
So, for example, the cost of immunizations, all of these other things are included in, in the funding. And so it's, it's an interesting idea. We, we roll up on one of these calls, we pull out our syringes at the end of the call and give everybody an immunization. We say, "Do you mind if we look around your house?" And we point out some issues with the home, particularly say there's an elderly person with, with issues, and we can maybe address some of those in the home.
Correct.
And then we can come back the next day for the follow-up care and say, "Oh, by the way, we can actually bill your insurance for this call." And is our, our plan to actually bill for that portion of this service, or are we still just doing it for informational purposes only?
We've had discussion with various individuals with respect to that, and I don't believe we're at that, we're not sitting in that seat just yet.
Hmm.
But eventually, that will be services that will be provided. There are ICD-9 codes, eventually ICD-10 codes that will be available for that, for billing on those kinds of services. Some of these CPT codes, which are a little different with respect on the billing side, the CPT codes need to be identified, and that's a portion of what we're going to be proving through this grant, is identification with the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services to identify an actual code or a number that allows us to bill for specific services or care or treatment that's being provided on scene.
Very interesting. Thank you. Any other questions, council?
We have one more slide.
Yes, Chief.
And Mayor Giles and members of the council, just to add to the follow-up care, another thing we're doing with that is we have loyalty customers that we go on many times. What we're trying to do with these is the follow-up on them to prevent them from going back into the emergency room. So that also is what Dr. Smith was referring to on just having, preventing them from returning, you know, having returned phone calls into the 911 system.
Going in and being able to do something about the root cause of why they're loyalty customers.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. So that was part of the follow-up plan as well. And now Tony is going to go over the, she'll go over the cooperative agreements and the details of how we're going to abide by the grant.
Morning, Mayor, Mayor Council. We've used the term up to this point, "grant." I want to change it up a little bit and really call for what it truly is, which it's a cooperative agreement. Typically with your grants, the grantor gives you the money, you purchase your equipment, or you run your program, you come back to them and you give them a follow-up report. In a cooperative agreement, we're going to have a lot of oversight from the grantor, from the Centers of Medicare and Medicaid. They, they're our partner in this endeavor. They want this to succeed as much as we do. So that's pretty much what it is. It's a cooperative agreement with them. With regard to that, our roles and responsibility for this is, first and foremost, is data collection and sharing. We're going to be collecting a lot of data, a lot of variables, not only us, but our partners. We're going to be aggregating this data and reporting on it, both for the grant and anything else that comes up in the future that we might want to try to explain. We're responsible for financial reporting and administration. This is not new to the grant world. Any, any type of federal grant where you expend monies, there's a quarterly and a semi-annual and an annual type reporting, so we'll be doing that as well. Programmatic reporting. We have a, a, a grants management from the Centers of Medicare and Medicare Services that we'll be working with for programmatic reporting. This will be done quarterly and semi-annually to them. Programmatic milestones, we'll be working again with our grants management specialists to meet our milestones and trying to get our program up and running by certain dates. Right now, we're looking about December to start putting these units on the road, so the model will begin then. We're responsible for operations, as we discussed earlier, what those operations were, and contract compliance, to make sure that we were, we are compliant with the notice of award or the agreement, but not only that, but our sub-recipient, to make sure they're, they're compliant with the award, and our partners are considered sub-recipient. Again, we were assigned a project officer. We've been meeting with them up to this point, about weekly, bi-weekly, and of course, as that continues and the program gets started, probably on a monthly basis. They also may come for site visits throughout the grant, come to Mesa and see what we're doing firsthand. And of course, we, we have the responsibility to continue to work with our partners and build those relationships as it develops over the next three years.
Thank you. Great presentation. This is, really, congratulations to all of us for your success in getting this award. Our, our community is going to be greatly served as a result of this, so congratulations to you and to everyone that will benefit from this.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good presentation.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
The next item on our agenda, item 1C, is to approve appointments to council committees, regional and other committees and boards. It's been moved. Is there a second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
That's any opposed? So it's unanimous. Thank you for your willingness to take on those assignments, council. Next item, number two, is information regarding the job order contracting projects. Do we have any questions or comments from the council? If no, then we will proceed on to item three, which is to hear reports on meetings and our conferences attended. Mr. Richards?
Earlier this week, I was in Massachusetts for a hearing with the EPA. I serve on the Local Government Advisory Commission with the EPA, specifically on a water work group that's working on the new waters the United States rule, trying to make sure that we understand its impacts on local government and are able to craft it in a way that lessens the impacts on our systems and makes the regulatory authority of the EPA a little bit more clear, so we can navigate some of those regulatory processes. But had a public hearing, a lot of people came in and testified, and I got assigned to a group to help edit the final report. So we'll be giving those recommendations to Administrator Gina McCarthy sometime in late October. Thanks.
Great. Mr. Summers?
Bridgestone America has opened a research and development facility looking at the Wa'ouli bush and creating bio-rubber from it. It's an environmentally sustainable way to create tires in the future. That research and development's being done here. We had the honor with the mayor to cut the ribbon on the facility here this past week. Thirty employees to start, ranging everywhere from labors to managers and scientists and engineers. It's also a statewide effort, because the bush is being farmed in Aho, so there's some jobs being created in, in rural Arizona as well. So we're very excited to welcome them to southeast Mesa.
It really is about the neatest idea I've heard in a long time, where you take this desert plant and you, that grows outside of Mesa, Arizona, and you research it and produce the tires in Mesa, Arizona, and we save the rainforests and have great jobs in Mesa.